Thank you. At this time, we will move on to unfinished business. Item number 15, Ben's Road Traffic Issues in Response to Neighborhood Survey. And I believe we have Andrew Yee to make a report.
Mayor Keller, members of council, my name is Andrew Yee, City Traffic Engineer. The matter before you, you have heard this matter a lot of times, and many of our Ben's folks has been spoken at the council meeting, and some of you went out to field visits, and you're aware of what has been going on. The issue that we have today, that we are bringing today, is not an easy issue. If there's a simple solution that I can address the Ben's folks' concern without adversely impacting other residents nearby, I'm the first one probably to have done that. However, that is not the case in this particular matter. That's why struggles has been going on in my part, as well as a part of folks living on Ben's Road. With that, I'm going to start my presentation with a little bit of background, what has been going on. 2003 County constructed Copper Hill Drive west of Ben's and connecting to David Way that connects directly Bouquet Canyon Road. With that, Ben's has been connected between Copper Hill and Bouquet Canyon Road. And the traffic from few hundred, maybe less than that, on Ben's Road to jump to 3,300 vehicles a day. A large portion of that traffic volume was cut-through traffic, that coming from outside of this neighborhood, using Ben's as a shortcut, coming from Bouquet and going directly toward to Copper, vice versa. Since then, we have tried to manage traffic on Ben's as much as we can. We have installed center line and edge line striping, trying to slow traffic down, and we have installed speed limit signs, we have installed two multi-way stop controls, and we have even installed weight limit signs to curb out all heavy vehicles from Ben's. We also increased LA County's Sheriff's Enforcement. In 2006, we have developed two-step traffic measures in our attempt to reduce Ben's traffic from 3,300 a day to 2,000 a day. And we have worked with the public extensively on that. And also, we have installed directional signs on Copper Hill, Bouquet, Antlump Canyon Road to direct people away from Ben's, encourage use on Haskett Canyon Road and Bouquet Canyon Road. The two measures we developed with the citizens on Ben's and other -- are, first one is a time restriction, right turn restriction on Copper Hill at Buckhorn, Copper Hill, and Ben's, and the left turn restriction on Bouquet at Ben's, at Sue Drive. The reason we are using two restrictions at two locations is that, if you look at the map, the Canterwood is almost parallel to Ben's, so if you do something on Ben's, the traffic may move on to Canterwood. So we try to eliminate that. However, Buckhorn and Copper Hill is in the jurisdiction of LA County. Second measure we proposed was that full-time turn restriction at Buckhorn, on Copper Hill, at Buckhorn and Ben's, that is by striping, no cars making left turn out of Ben's or Buckhorn, 24/7. Prior to this, we had extensive public meetings, and we met with the residents many, many times, and we met with the county staff, and we made the direct surveys to the residents, asking their input, and we collect their input, we got the consensus. At the time, we brought this to city council, and city council approved both measures. However, one of the conditions this council had, part of a condition we had, was we had to get approval from the county. County only approved step one of those two measures, and with a modification. In 2006, we have implemented turn restriction on Ben's and Buckhorn. I'll show you the next slide. And the time restriction is about four hours, two hours on Copper Hill side for the right turn, and two hours on Bouquet side. Bouquet side is morning, and Copper Hill is afternoon, because that's how traffic flows. And we have conducted many traffic counts, again, and before restrictions went on, the control location we counted is A, which is nearby Copper Hill, just south of Copper Hill, on Ben's, north of Dan's Court, was about 3,300 before the restriction. Once the restriction went in, the traffic volume went down to 1,800. However, Ben's residents claim that the traffic on the southern section of Ben's is much higher, and we also count that in 2007, which shows about 2,400 vehicles a day. Just want to, city council aware that we have received many complaints from residents that they want the existing restriction to be removed, and because of their access and their travel distance has changed. With the council's direction, we went back out to the citizens, Ben's folks, and some other citizens in the neighborhood. We have developed surveys and gathered their input. And this survey form has been developed by staff, however, it has been critiqued by some of the Ben's folks and residents from the Cross Creek as well. And survey went out to 538 residents that are impacted by current restriction, or any potential change may happen, and we have received about 260 return surveys with 24 pages of comment that is included in staff's report. The 24 pages, basically, we transpose their comments into our Word document, and it come out to about 24 pages, and there are many different types of comments and citizens brought to our attention. The survey basically asked four questions: Do you support existing restriction? If you're not, do you support extending existing restriction? Or do you support the plan two of originally proposed traffic measure? Or do you support, or do not support, possible closure of Ben's Road, maybe perhaps by cul-de-sac? Next six slides shows the result of the survey returns we got. And first, we analyze the survey return from Ben's Road only. There are 26 residents are fronting Ben's Road. We have 18 returned, of which they do not support existing restriction as-is, nor they do not support the extension of current restriction on Ben's Road. However, they are favor in having a full-time restriction on the north side at Copper Hill, and they are strongly favor closer of Ben's Road. As you can see, the measure two, they favor nine to six. For the closure, they favor 14 to three, and one is non-responsive. Next four slides shows the result on each question by each street. As for the first question, support or non-support of existing restriction, majority of the streets, except perhaps Ben's and some other streets, they are in favor of leaving existing restriction as-is. As for the second question, extending of restriction from the current existing, they are not in favor of it. Third, the full-time closure on the north side at Copper, and majority of streets do not favors that, except Ben's, and pretty much Ben's is the only one favors that restriction. And fourth question was a closure of Ben's, Cross Creek, Ben's, and Canterwood favors it, however, all other streets were against that measure. If you combine all these things together, leaving existing traffic restriction as-is has become most favorable choice of residents' response. Out of 260, 139 people in favor of leaving as-is versus 90 people do not want what we have today. As for the second, extending the hours of current restriction, 154 people were against it versus only 20 were in favor of it. For the full-time closure for North End, and majority people, again, 158 out of 260 returned were against it versus 32 in favor of it. For closure of Ben's, 131 people were against it, and 62 were in favor of closure. And these 62, you can see predominantly came from Ben's, Cross Creek, and Canterwood. With that, the survey clearly indicate that residents are in favor of leaving the existing restriction as-is, and more than 50% of people are in favor of it. And also, most of the residents are overwhelmingly against any additional restriction on Ben's, and that may hinder their access and travel pattern and things of nature. With that, staff recommends to leave the existing restriction as-is and continue with the Sheriff's Enforcement on Ben's Road. That concludes my presentation.
Council, any questions for Andrew? Go ahead, Laurie.
No, I was gonna say, you can --
Then if I may, we have a number of speakers on this item, and we will go to the community. Our first speaker will be Alan Firdman, followed by Jeff Pilate. I'm sorry, sir, I'm having trouble with your name, and next one is Ronald Hall. Mr. Firdman?
Good evening again, mayor and city council members. My name is Alan Firdman, and I am the Chair of the Canyon Country Advisory Committee. After reviewing all the material I can find on this problem, I have to say the Ben's Road issue is traffic on Canvas on steroids. I believe it appears to be that way, because we have allowed the problem to fester over a much longer period of time. While patchwork solutions for this issue have been implemented, we have allowed more and more development in the area, putting an even greater strain on the existing infrastructure. I'll bet that although the basic road structure was planned a long time ago, it was never anticipated to have to carry this much traffic. If we continue to rely on residential streets to carry major traffic flows, we can expect the older areas to lose value and decline aesthetically, as they are considered less desirable and safe. When I think of the east side, I see several similarities with Ben's and Canvas. The traffic department attempts to minimize the 2,450 trips a day on Ben's by stating it is mostly local neighborhood traffic, and no proposed solution to mitigate the problem, and does not appear to be investigating any new alternatives. In the Ben's case, I think the worst possible approach we could have taken was to send out a survey. That sent the message to the community that we have no solution, and asks the public, what do you want us to do? Reading the 25 pages of survey comments, I was not surprised by the majority of respondents asking for what was best for them. Was it really the city's intent to implement traffic engineering solutions by popular vote? I don't think so. What the survey did accomplish was pit neighborhood against neighborhood without obtaining any workable consensus. I fully realize that when we only use the open-or-close methods currently proposed, we are playing whack-a-mole with traffic flow. I fail to understand why our traffic department does not have the modeling tools necessary to analyze open-close decisions, traffic calming implementations, and bringing new developments online. What I would like to see is the traffic department be encouraged to come up with creative, out-of-the-box solutions. Because if we do nothing for Ben's, we can expect this issue to be periodically raised with greater and greater intensity. If we do not learn from Ben's, we can expect similar issues to be raised with greater and greater frequency. We have already seen that pattern, starting on the east side with Canvas. Therefore, I urge you, the time to learn is now, the time to be proactive is now, and the time to initiate action is now, now while we still have time to change the status quo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Firdman. Our next speaker is Jeff Pilate, and I know I'm mispronouncing a name, I apologize, sir. I believe you live on Cowood. You gotta help me out with your last name.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. Jeff Pilate, I live in Sawgus, on Cowood Street. And while we and everybody else off of Ben's understand that there's traffic issues, we also have traffic issues as well. And nobody's perfect, and you have to look at it as if you're going to close Ben's, all you're doing is taking that area and you're moving it to everybody else. It's like pushing a bowl, where you push on one side, it's gotta go somewhere, it's gonna go everywhere else. We have schools, we have the school traffic, we also have other ways that we're trying to get out. I work from my home, and I am very conscious about which ways I try to go. But at the same time, there are days when I have to go up Ben's to go, because I'm heading in that direction. When I'm coming home, I'm heading down. One of the problems that we have now with gasoline is the fact that our cars are not as efficient, so therefore now, we're all driving out of the way to get home, just to appease 26 homes. You said 26, I actually counted 25. I don't know how they got to 26, but I went and counted 25, so you're asking, you're letting 25 homes affect 500 and 12 other people, even though a lot of those people did not send in their surveys. I support letting Ben's stay the way it is, and I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Ron Hall, followed by Kathy Meyer. If I may, ladies and gentlemen, ask you, because we do have a number of speakers, perhaps when I give the heads up, you can move forward here and grab a seat, we'll save a little time and travel here in the room. Hall?
Council, I just want to approve the current measures with Ben's. I know they get heavily impacted. I walk up that street, I live in the neighborhood off of Cowood. It is a very busy area, but we have to ease the flow of traffic. And some people have to be -- I'm on Cowood, it's the back end of the school, I get moms and caravans going through there. It's fast, I knew it when I bought there. That's just certain things you have to deal with. As a neighbor, I mean, I feel for you, but we have to be able to get around. And if we start blocking every which way, that means people are gonna start going up to Kathleen and other directions to get around. All right? I didn't know about the Canvas residents, but I feel for you guys also, but we have to ease the traffic flow. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Meyer, followed by Joseph Chu, followed by Ralph Edson.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and city council members. My name is Kathy Meyer, and I've lived on Ben's for 30 years. And first of all, what I want to say is that your study, your survey, it went up to 538 or 28 people? Well, I want to know why at Ben's and Alaminos, on the north side or the east side, or whichever you want, why was that survey given to them when they already have access to Canterwood or to Copper Hill from Kathleen and to Bouquet at the end of Alaminos? They have their access. Ben's Road does not affect them at all. Andrew, you're throwing us under the bus. There's been many times where we have -- I don't know what to say, I'm so angry right now. The Cowood man, he lives on a cul-de-sac, basically. He has no problems. The last council meeting where we were here till 1 o'clock in the morning, Andrew told you that there was a difference between Linda Vista and Ben's, because Linda Vista was basically a neighborhood problem, and Ben's was a cut-through problem. And if you don't blame me, go back on your video and look at it. He said it. Mr. Pulsecam, you cut Andrew off very quickly when he was telling you this, and I believe it's because he was saying way too much. And that night, a lot of people were talking about the Linda Vista problem, and there was a man, and he's here, and I'm really sorry, but he spoke to you, he came back to his seat, I asked him where these streets were, because I had no clue, told me, and he said he sympathizes with us Ben's people, and then he proceeds to tell me that he uses our street to go up to Canterwood as a cut-through. Now, I was very angry when he said that. I thought, here he is complaining about his street getting all the traffic, and he could give a rat's behind about cutting through our neighborhood. Another council meeting that he spoke at, I told you about getting my license renewed, and the woman at the DMV saw where I lived, apologized to me, and said that she uses our street because it's just easier. It's convenient. And you know, it's funny, because at the council meetings, you guys talk about the quality of life for residents of Santa Clarita. And I'd just like to know, shouldn't the Ben's residents have some type of quality of life, like the people around, the residents around Smizer Ranch? Which I watched the proceedings on that on TV, and you guys talked about their quality of life. I think we should have the same. Can I just say one more thing? I just would like you guys, I'd invite you guys to come, and I'd like you guys just to see the way we have to live on Ben's.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Come back.
Our next speaker is Ralph Edson, followed by Sandra Edson, followed by Linda -- that's what I said. Thank you.
I'm Ralph Edson, I'm a 29-year resident of Ben's Road. The first 22 years were very happy. I would like to read from a letter that Andrew referred to, that was sent out, the original survey. This is from the city, dated October 11th, 2005. "Since the opening of Copper Hill Drive and its connection to Ben's Road, the traffic volume on Ben's Road has increased tremendously. Immediately after the connection, traffic volumes jumped from just a few hundred to over 2,000 trips per day, now exceeding 3,300, as Andrew said. The city has been monitoring traffic conditions on Ben's Road. The data has shown that much of the traffic is using Ben's Road as a shortcut between Bouquet Canyon and Copper Hill Drive, cut-through traffic." In other words, contradicting what they're saying now. Residents on Ben's Road have expressed numerous times to the city and county, I won't go on for that, I know the time is limited. It goes on to describe the two-step plan that Andrew mentioned earlier, of which the first step was the two-hour turn restrictions, which frankly do nothing, because I'm at work during those times, it's rush hour, as most people are. It doesn't help during the weekend, it doesn't help from 12 a.m. to 6 a.m. in the morning, when through traffic is speeding through your street, waking you up. But going on, the city followed up with a letter three months later, this is dated January 11th, 2006. 119 residents responded to the questionnaire. 58% of the responses were in favor of the proposal, the closing off of the two-step proposal, while 42% were opposed. And then elsewhere, it says, "Step two," which is the step that we were all waiting for to get done, and hasn't been, "step two will be implemented if step one fails to achieve the desired traffic reduction." Okay, the traffic, the city traffic engineers made a mistake in this survey. They only surveyed a small portion of residents around Ben's Road and the neighboring traffic. Since then, they've become a lot smarter, and they know how to conduct surveys now. They expand the area to include all those people that don't really care, that maybe are inconvenienced by 30 seconds or a minute, as the other gentleman said. And by doing so, they also put in a little dig about, if you approve this, you may have to pay for it, you know, your taxes will go up, that's a possibility. So they basically, it's become a science to them to know how to conduct surveys, to ensure that nothing will get done. It's an insult to me that this second survey was even done, knowing that the results were preconceived by everybody and their dog. I feel that this survey was just another tool of the city traffic engineers to justify their desire to do nothing, to, in other words, please the masses at the expense of the lifestyle of a few. Six years ago, when it was opened up, a mistake was made. We objected at that time, we weren't listened to, but we could see what was happening. Turns out, we were right. It's time to undo that mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edson. I passed over, I apologize. Mr. Joseph Chu?
Hello. I'm actually glad Ralph went before me, because he's been here a lot longer than me. I'm his neighbor, and I just want to say that in response to what Ms. McLean said about people being angry, I'm sitting here, I'm relatively new to the neighborhood, I love the fact that after I moved to Santa Clarita, I just love the city, and I work for the paper here, and I'm really thankful for that, but I've also learned a lot. And I realized that with this whole issue, the survey and with the results of what Mr. Yee told us, I mean, I didn't need to know that, because I already knew it was gonna happen. We know for, I mean, anyone with common sense knows that you poll 500 people, and only those who live on the street are gonna care, everyone else doesn't care. And so, you know, when I first moved in the neighborhood, we walked down the street, we walked up Dan Court, which is literally two houses away from us, and I felt like I was in Disneyland, you know? This is a whole new world, and we weren't on that. And just three, four weeks ago, we had friends over at our house, and as we were letting them go, we walked out to the side of the street at around 9 o'clock to say bye, and we just chit-chatted about 10 minutes, and there must have been at least eight or nine times I had to shuffle my friend's pregnant wife off the edge of the street, because cars were coming in fast at 9 o'clock at night. We learned really quickly that every night, we hear cars, I'm two houses away from the stop sign, Ralph is right on the corner, every night, there's a car screeching to halt at the stop sign, or barreling through the stop sign, every night. You know, it's a safety issue for us. Obviously, people who live outside of the street are more concerned about convenience. The survey addressed that issue, and obviously, you know, we want to think about that, too. But the issue is here, one of the guys who couldn't make it today, who's a strong proponent of this whole thing, you know, suggested that we do the cul-de-sac idea. And I thought about it at first, and I said, you know what, it's gonna be inconvenient for me, too, if you cut Ben's in half, because my kid, my daughter, is going to first grade at Bouquet. And I go right down Alaminos to get there, but I thought, you know, it may be inconvenient, but it's gonna possibly save my daughter and my son's life. Because my kids do not play on the street. I don't even let them on the street. And so, we're concerned about that. And with all of this, you realize that, you know, I came, and I actually came to the meeting with Andrew Yee and Tony, the first week I was here, because I realized the issue that was at hand. And as I was talking about the street issue at night, and Andrew's suggestion was get dual-pane windows on my house. Well, first of all, I can't afford that. If you're gonna do that for me, great, but same time, that's not the issue. It's not just noise pollution and convenience and comfort, it's safety. And I'm worried for my family. I want to live here for a long time, but the longer I live here and nothing else happens to the street, the greater possibility that something's gonna happen, not just to my family, but to someone else. So we have to wait for something to happen, for someone to get hurt, or someone to get killed, or for us to do something, just because there are 26 people that aren't that important compared to the entire neighborhood, that's very sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Next, we have Sandra Edson, followed by Linda, and you helped me earlier, thank you, and Scott Young.
Before I begin, I would like to tell you that Tony Natoli asked me to give his regards. He's currently at the hospital with his wife, who's in very serious condition. My name is Sandra Edson. Please, first let me say that I strongly oppose the recommendation to leave Ben's Road as-is, obviously. I've been a resident on Ben's Road for 29 years, and have lived in Santa Clarita since 1973. I've always tried to support the city and my neighbors, and prior to problems on Ben's Road, I believe this council would look after, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. And prior to the problems on Ben's Road, I believe this council would look after the best interests of its citizens, even if it's just one. However, we've been coming here for over five years, pleading with you about traffic conditions that are becoming worse and unbearable. Our lives and our homes and our pursuit of happiness is steadily declining. I have finally reached the point where I have to say that I'm very disappointed in this city council. You have not kept your word, nor do I believe that you ever intended to do so. So with that, here's a brief history. So with that, here's a brief history. June 11th, 2003, is when the Ben's Road residents first met with traffic engineers to express concerns over the ever-increasing traffic issues. Five years ago, we approached this council asking for relief, as we no longer had a neighborhood, no longer could cross our streets. And by the way, last month, I was crossing the street as I was taking my nightly walk, and I looked down at the stop sign way down there and saw a car coming to a stop. I figured, I have tons of time. So I proceeded to cross the street. And he sped up and tried to hit me. People cannot back out of their driveways. They could no longer get restful night's sleep.
Could you speak into the microphone so we can hear you?
When I did, it wasn't working. Okay, I'm sorry. It's working again. They could no longer wake up expecting to find our yards, homes, and vehicles in the same condition as when we went to bed. Almost overnight, our solitude and refuge of peace and quiet was gone. Others speak of being inconvenienced for 15 seconds or two minutes, because a shortcut that they have used and abused may no longer be available to them. For 22 years, it was not there, and we lived happily. Please understand this. Ben's Road residents are inconvenienced 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Road surveys indicate traffic on weekends is approaching that of weekdays. Saturdays are becoming worse. We have no refuge, we have nowhere else to go, we're trapped. Still, others have commented that the few should not dictate to the many where and when they can travel, or how fast and how noisy they can be. When in America have we said it's okay for the many to trample over the few, and deprive even one of them their right to pursue happiness, peace, and tranquility? Please implement an effective, no-nonsense means of stopping cut-through traffic on our street.
I'm sorry, Ms. Edson, you have to wrap it up.
I'm wrapping it up. Now, and each of you promised in the past, you have the tools, use them. Please end our suffering.
Thank you, Linda, and I apologize, I'm having a difficult time with your last name. What's your last name, please?
Fout, the P. S.
Very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Linda Fout. I'm a 21-year resident of Ben's Road. And the city's recommendation that no new traffic mitigation measures be applied on Ben's is simply not acceptable. A very small pocket in the North Saugus area has been overrun and overwhelmed by traffic in the last five years, like nothing we've seen up there. And I'm not just talking Ben's, although Ben's is my primary concern. It's every imaginable through-street from Copper Hill. The situation's going to be exacerbated when 518 homes that are planned for the top of Ben's throw at a minimum another 1,000 cars, that's two cars per home, into the fray. That doesn't even take into consideration their gardeners, their house cleaners, their pool men. The situation is going to go from nightmare to beyond belief. That's coming, and we know that. The city has managed to address traffic mitigation issues in commercial zones quite well. You have to go a certain way to get to Vons, and a certain way to get out of the gas stations, and everybody manages to live with that. We don't live there. We don't mind being inconvenienced, because we can't turn a certain way to get to the mall from New Hall Ranch Road, but that's okay. Any council that can turn San Fernando Road into a dead end can come up with some better ways to give these residential neighborhoods relief. There are respites, there are havens, and you can do it. I'm sure you can. You're smart people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is Mr. Scott Young, followed by Jean Erickson, followed by Tim Ben Boyston. True, you got to use that microphone if we're going to hear you. Sorry.
Going to give you a microphone, so that you can...
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, Council. It's worth, thank you very much. Just, if I may, I'm Scott Young, and you know what, I constantly hear, I got to throw an encouragement out. I constantly hear how good our city is. I read papers, I'm on the internet or something and look, and it's just great. And I just want to thank you for that. And the two gentlemen over here, thank you for whatever part you're playing in that also. But if I may, go to another page, please. You know, up there, right there, that's the promise. That's what we were told. We were led to believe. Another one, if I may, please. Other one, maybe that's all there are. You know, Frank, thank you so much. I appreciate your comments. Ma'am, you know why everyone gets angry? Is because they're afraid. They're afraid of the past historical actions. They're afraid of these developing reputations. That's why. We're just scared. And we've been here for five years. That's why we're scared. That we're just not going to be hurt again, and swept under the carpet. Just, you know, you can understand that. You know, the original survey, you know, was done. It was Smythe, he was a part of that, some of you were a part of that. And that was a legitimate survey. This survey that was orchestrated to deliver a justified reason to quit having to deal with us. A low blow. We, you know, we're just people here, we don't have full time to think of these strategies and tactics. You know, the survey tactics are designed to pit resident against resident, convenience against safety. Let's not forget that we're not starting to close anything. One of the guys from Cowood, which may open up, said that. And you know what, we're not starting to close anything. It was closed for 22 years prior. Boom, everybody got a convenience out of the blue, and now they're holding on to it. Well, you know what, you're sacrificing people. Pulse Camp, can you open your ears to people that are begging you for some help? Please, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Jean Erickson, followed by Tim Ben Boyston, followed by Nadine Teeter.
Hello, I'm Jean Erickson. Glad to be here. I've lived on Ben's Road for almost 30 years, and everyone has said all the things that I wanted to say. So I'll just tell you about a little thing that happened today. I was going to come down here to the meeting. It was 5:30. I got in the car, got out to the street. Four cars came around. It says at the end of the Ben's, it says, "No right turn onto Ben's from 4:30 to 6:30." This was 5:30. Okay. I eased out, you know, completely watching, 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 that they are not going to run over me. And as I went down the street, went to the stop sign, there were about four cars behind me, coming from around the corner. So these things aren't, these restrictions that they have aren't being obeyed, and people are just coming down. As I got down to Bouquet, there were about, maybe about six cars behind me. They all came down from up on Copper Hill. And that was at 5:30 in the evening. You try to get out of there in the morning, forget it. It's, it really is a problem. And we were promised that if it went over 2,000 cars, we would have the cul-de-sac put in. And I think that it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. Tim Ben Boyston.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. Now, I don't live up there in Saugus at Ben's Road, but I, like many of you, have used that shortcut. And I didn't even know I was really using a shortcut that so many people were using, until I got on the council and sat behind the desk there and had the people from Ben's Road come up and say, "We have this problem." Then I went up there and looked at it and said, "There's a problem with the planning here. There was a problem with planning." We did that. Not us by ourselves, but the county as well. We built a mess of houses up there and connected Copper Hill. And it became a shortcut, because if you have to go all the way down to David Way and wait on that stop sign in the morning, you're going to be able to save five, six, seven minutes, at least, by cutting through their neighborhood. So, since I was on the council, I had a great interest, and I still have a great interest in trying to solve these people's problem. And these are a minority group of people. You know very well that if you ask the people along the road that are having the problem, they're all going to say they're having a problem. It's kind of like if they put a crack house in your neighborhood, and you say, "I got a problem with that house." But if you have drug dealers all the way around, and you ask all them, they wouldn't have a problem with the crack house in your neighborhood coming to buy it. And I'm afraid that this drug is too good to avoid for a lot of our motorists in Santa Clarita. They're using this like a freeway. It's like Ben's Freeway. And the way that you can solve that is probably to close something. And if you do that study, of course, the people that live over a few blocks this way and a few blocks this way, they're going to want the convenience to turn right or left, Copper Hill or go down to Bouquet. Of course they are. But part of good government is good planning, and when good planning fails, you have to take care of those bad mistakes that were made. And that was a bad mistake. Now, I'm really excited about the fact that Lori is sitting in my seat, because I read on her campaign literature that that was one of the things she was going to do, to fix cut-through traffic as part of her plan for roads. And I am certain the people in Ben's Road are excited about that, you having the leadership role here. I know Marcia had been with me every time I spoke about this, saying, "We have to have a solution." So that just leaves one more vote, I think, and then you can fix this problem up at Ben's Road. And it won't be popular with the people on both sides, you probably lose some votes if you run for reelection, but it will fix the problem that we have created in this neighborhood that didn't have it. And that's what good governance is about. So, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Nadine Teeter, followed by Rich Smith, followed by Maravik Francis.
Mayor, Council members, good evening again. My name's Nadine Teeter, and I'd like to express my opinion on Agenda Item Number 15. I've been following the Ben's Road saga for years now. It's been five years for them. It does not come as a surprise to me that their problem has not been resolved, based on what I'm going through in my own neighborhood. Yet, another cul-de-sac opened up and turned into a thoroughfare. This is not acceptable. Quality of lives have been compromised, property values depreciated, frustration, aggravation, all the things these residents did not sign up for. I 100% understand what they are going through. I live it every day on canvas. What has happened to their street is wrong. How can you not see it, or do you just choose to ignore it? What if this was one of your streets? I understand development, but you do not throw an existing neighborhood to the sharks. You need to protect them. Based once again on a bias survey, city staff has made the recommendation to do nothing. Of course, if you ask surrounding streets what they think of closing Ben's Road, they're going to say no, because they don't want to be inconvenienced, because they are part of the problem. The only opinion that matters are those 25 families that live on Ben's Road. Tonight, each one of you has an opportunity to do the right thing. Follow through with what you promised them. I am urging you to turn over staff's recommendation to leave existing turn restrictions, and to direct staff to take the appropriate action and stop all their cut-through traffic. How much longer do they have to live like this? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rich Smith, followed by Maravik Francis, followed by Jesse Rebus.
Good evening again. As you know, I don't live on Ben's Road, but I certainly empathize with their problem. I see every day what happens when planning fails. As a check and balance system, which is what our entire government is based on, it is there for the purpose of correcting mistakes. Planning made a mistake on Ben's Road. Planning made a mistake when they put without controls on our street, Linda Vista and Canvas. These can be remedied. Convenience is never as important as safety. Safety is what we care about, or we wouldn't be here at this hour, or at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, as we've had to in the past. All they're asking is that there's a, if there's a remedy, and there is one, use it. Let's not wait for somebody to die. You know, we see on our street that when things are left alone, they fester. More recently, it was noted that a 7-Up full-size delivery truck was now using our street and Canvas as a cut-through. We see people riding back and forth at high rates of speed, and when they're yelled at, they give us all kinds of advice as to what we can do with ourselves. Not too long ago, we had a resident who, a young lady, a mother actually, of several children. Fortunately, they weren't there. Getting the mail out of her mailbox on Linda Vista, when she sees a white pickup truck with young males, just as she put it hauling down the street towards her, her first response was to turn, "Slow down." Well, she was met with a gesture that none of us want. A man in the back of the truck pulled a gun out and waved it at her, and she just about fell apart. These are things that have been left to go too far. Everyone has said it, we're here, we need your help, you can remedy our problem, and that's all we ask. Thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Francis. Ms. Francis, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Maravik Francis, I'm from Saugus, and I live on Alaminos Drive. My concern is that the current turn restrictions that was imposed by only 69 people is negatively impacting most of the other residents in the area like me. We are now getting most of the traffic down Alaminos through Urban Dale, and Kathleen is getting most of the traffic also. So everything, all the cut-through traffic on Ben's Road is now coming through our area, and we're having the same safety problem. So, the, I do support the no other alternatives to Ben's Road, and I actually desire that we remove the current turn restrictions. Again, our quality of life, the other neighborhood residents in the area is being deteriorated by all the other cut-through traffic going down Alaminos Drive. Just come visit Alaminos Drive. And Kathleen, and also Fan Court, again, it's about safety. I can't back up now, and I'm having problems with my children playing on the street, because of everything being rerouted to us. So, again, if you look at the 25 pages of comments, you'll see that I'm speaking for most of the other residents in the neighborhood, which supported no alternative restrictions to Ben's Road. And I am, again, saying that it's reducing our quality of life and our safety also. We live in the neighborhood, too. We also pay for public roads, too. Our voice counts, too. This is still democracy, and the votes should count. With, including the 538 residents that was on the survey. Again, my action is, if we can look at now removing all turn restrictions on Ben's Road, that is one of my actions that I'm proposing. If you look at the 25 comments, you will see support of that. Also, maybe to prove more of... see support of that. Also, maybe to prove more of the evidence that it's reducing the quality of our life and our safety, doing another survey that includes the 538 residents, because the initial survey was only 209, and only 63 responded yes. And there are more houses on Alaminos and Kathleen, and we are just afraid now, when traffic is cutting, you know, through us, from the cut-through traffic that used to be Ben's Road. And most of the traffic anyways through Ben's Road is residents, and residents are being penalized and getting ticketed. Residents. Reducing the quality of our life, residents. Not cut-through traffic. Area residents. Thank you.
Jesse Rivas, followed by Kenneth Zeiler.
Council, Honorable Mayor, my name is Jesse Rivas, and I'm a resident of Ben's Road. My home sits on the northwest corner of Ben's Road, the cross-street being Copper Hill. It is a fact that the ever-increasing traffic puts me and my family in jeopardy. There's not one day that goes by when I exit my driveway do I fear be rear-ended by a vehicle making a right turn onto Ben's Road. Vehicles making a right turn often come to an abrupt stop in order to allow me to exit my driveway. Cars making a right turn off of Copper Hill have no reason to slow down, and simply do not expect to see a vehicle backing out of a driveway. My driveway is approximately 15 yards from the corner of Copper Hill. The question is not if one day me and my family will be rear-ended, but rather when this will happen. When it does, I am willing to bet that the person that causes this accident will not be one of my neighbors, but rather someone using Ben's Road as a cut-through. My second point has got to do with the survey results. Initially, 25 residents wanted relief from the cut-through traffic. What is surprising, though, of the 260 surveys returned of the 538 sent, 31% were still in favor of street closure, some type of street closure. That's 62 households supporting a street closer versus 131 opposed. That's more than the original 25 Ben's Road residents. Did anyone really expect that there would be a majority if the survey was expanded? If 62 of 203 that returned surveys indicate they support a cul-de-sac, doesn't that say something? Did anyone really expect a majority favoring increased restrictions after the survey base was expanded? It would appear there are some others out there that really understand this issue, and understand that the problem can be easily, inexpensively, and effectively corrected with minimal impact to all. Even this survey indicates that Ben's residents really want. Please do not leave restrictions hours as they are no longer effective. Please do not extend the restriction hours, as these would not be effective either. Who is going to enforce them when they are not enforced now? And please do implement full-time restrictions with a meridian or other barrier. It is now time to do what is right, what is reasonable, and sensible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kenneth Zeiler, followed by Annette Lucas.
Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Ken Zeiler. I moved to Santa Clarita in 1972. I moved on to Kathleen 10 years ago. We need your help. We need it badly. Kathleen is a Ben's at this point. The restrictions on the turns that have been implemented force the traffic that cannot turn down North Buckhorn as they're going east on Copper Hill, come up to the next street, which is Ben's. They cannot turn right because of the turn restrictions. The next street is Kathleen. You've only got 10 homeowners on Kathleen between Copper Hill and Alaminos, and that street is now a freeway. The flow-through traffic uses it. The residents that are being impacted are now using, what I feel is the only way into their homes, is to come down Kathleen from Copper Hill onto Alaminos. The other young lady was mentioning Alaminos is very busy, because that's the only way you can get in there if you're coming east on Copper Hill. Same way if you're going up Bouquet. There's turn restrictions. The only way to get over to Copper Hill is supposedly David Way with a signal. People don't want to wait for the signal. They turn on the street prior to that. Hob, jump on Alaminos, get over on to Kathleen, travel that 10-house street to get to Copper Hill. Saves them probably four or five minutes. Our quality of life is gone downhill. Our safety is being impacted. Please remember us 10 homeowners that are now taken up the brunt of all this rest of the traffic that has now been forced to take an alternate route, and Kathleen is getting most of it. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Annette Lucas, followed by Saul Levy, followed by Susan Walker.
Sound familiar, Annette? Yes, it does. Anyway, Mayor, Council, it was apparent to me as I read the survey results from Ben's Road questionnaire, that all the same arguments were given during the Valley Cal Grove issue. "It makes my trip longer. It's a public road. I should be able to use it. Your traffic, my traffic." The comments went on and on with the same basic issues. I'm thankful to say I grew from the Valley Cal Grove issue. Living in harmony with your neighbor is much more rewarding than being right. Right for a few extra seconds or minutes in my car? Maybe my right to use a public road. It might be my right to use a public road. However, at what cost? Ruining their quiet residential street? Mayor and Council, I do not think cul-de-sacs on Ben Road are a good idea, but gates that provide access for emergency vehicles are appropriate. The residents of Ben's Road face safety and quality of life issues on their street. Please respond to their issue in the same manner that you responded to Valley Cal Grove. We are a suburban community of families, and we need you to support our quality of life, whatever that neighborhood may be. I really feel for these people, and I want to tell you that when Valley Cal Grove was closed, it was the best decision this council made. Happy Valley is happy. We have learned to adjust that those extra seconds were not important in our lives, and I can say that now we're all friends. We're not feuding. So, please, help these folks out too. Good night.
Thank you.
Santa Clarita is Southern California's entertainment destination. Just minutes from LA, Santa Clarita's year-round weather means you can enjoy year-round fun, like thrilling coasters and water parks, premium shopping, destination day spas, fine dining, outdoor adventure, and major events such as wine festivals, golf tournaments, and the Cowboy Festival. Santa Clarita, always in season.